So yeah, so at six o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And we'll go to three point one. Dave Romano, the acting director of infrastructure, and Rick Friesen are with us, manager of Public Works. And I guess, just if you could just give us an update on what, where you are with the capital projects? Where you think some of the hurdles are and try and get them completed in time by the end of the month? Because I see that there's a lot that's supposed to be done by the end of October, and sometimes we plan for that. So if you can just give us a feel of where you think we're gonna be. And then also, maybe give us an update on how you thought the snow clearing went last year? And if there's any takeaways that you got from it that you might wanna put in for this year? Or if there's some changes you wanna do with it? So that's basically what we're looking for.
All right. Well, I'll start off with the capital items here. First of all, there's approximately twenty capital items that are required to be completed before fiscal year end. Out of the twenty capital items, there are six that are a hundred percent complete. There's fourteen that are work in progress. And they range from ninety-five percent complete to thirty percent complete. There's one that will be probably carried over till next year. And that is the shelter and park bench on the Grassmere Pedestrian Bridge site. The reason for the delay of that is because the developer has not finished doing the landscaping and on that site. And that has to be done first before we can complete the shelter and the park bench there. So we're anticipating that that work won't get done this year by the developer. It'll be carried over till next spring. And at that time, we'll complete that work that's required on the capital budget.
Can you give it up a timeframe that you wanna done it?
Have we asked the developer that?
Yeah.
We've asked the developer to expedite the work as quick as possible. They've indicated that, you know, they're gonna try to get it done realistically. The DA was signed this summer, and they're obligated to complete the works within two years.
Within two years? Yeah, because I think we're at the two-year mark.
No, the DA was signed this summer.
Okay, but we've been asking for that landscaping for two years, have we not, Councilor Buscetti?
Yeah, I guess it goes from when the signature was done, but I could...
Go ahead.
You have any questions? No, I know it's part of that property, but the walkway that is on the south side of the creek from that pedestrian bridge. Can they get that done? Like, so that our public works can actually be clearing that walkway this winter?
Yeah, we're after the developer to do that, and they've staked out that currently. And they're advising that their contractor will be starting that work and completing before winter comes.
That pathway is part of phase one. And because it was part of phase one, and it was realigned with the purchase of the Elm properties, there's tighter timelines to finalize the work on that.
Just, I'm getting a lot of comments, you know, this bridge has been in for two years. We can't even get to it when it's raining. You know, the thistles, two feet high around there. It's, I just feel like they got it, the properties aligned. That should be one of the first, get the people moving, and it keeps them off the rest of the property.
Just some background information on that. When the pedestrian bridge was constructed, there was a pathway from Grassmere to Elm. But then when the RM put out that tender for tendering out that property for sale, what happened is the low bidder, which was Waterside, which was successfully awarded that purchase of that land, when they came to the plan for those lots, they had to readjust the lots based on the development that they were doing. And therefore, that existing pathway was removed and was relocated further west. So that's what caused that to happen.
Now, did they just not act on it because there was no development agreement?
Well, the contractor at the time doing phase three, which was rolled into the Elmwood, the Elm development area there, that was just constructed over the last month and a half to regrade and redo the lot grades there and put in the infrastructure sewer water, land drainage, and the services, the curb stop sewer and water services right up to the property line. So that was ongoing. That's what caused that delay in that path.
Okay. Thank you.
So we anticipate for the capital projects, the remaining that are work in place, fourteen, we anticipate those will all be done sometime mid-October, when we should be completed.
Go ahead, Councilor Buscetti.
On the Whistler Hollow Park, I just, I happen to be in there today dropping a resident off. And I see the park area, there's a lot of fill there. So is that gonna, that should be, well, we have the equipment that's scheduled to go in sometime in October.
Correct.
So that should be down and leveled prior to it. There's a lot of fill there, so that's why I'm saying...
They are scheduled to level that and shape it starting on Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
This week. Just to recap on the pavement works under the plan, we're approximately eighty-eight percent complete as of the end of August. So that'll be wrapping up as per the original scope of work for the tender.
So which is the last road that's gonna be done, then, you think?
The last road would be, go ahead, Rick.
It looks like it'll probably be Minnick Road.
Spot repairs.
Spot repairs.
Have you started on Minnick yet, or is that still...?
No, no. We're just finishing, we're gonna be paving Jackman next week. Then they're moving over to the public lane between Highwall and Minnehaha. And then from there, they'll go to Holland and Siler, and then Minnick by the looks of things. Now, that schedule does change, like the sequencing once in a while, but we're trying to stay on top of it.
And the speed platforms are planned for when? Are the speed cables, whatever we wanna call it, pumps?
Do we have the location on those?
Yeah. The speed tables will fall into place somewhere around these spot repairs as well. I would anticipate, once we get further confirmation, we wanna pin down the location in Trails Development. But I'm anticipating that will be towards the end of September, somewhere around there, early October, as well as the Riverdale reconstruction pathway as well.
I'd just like to see those in before Halloween, where we're gonna have a lot of kids, you know, walking through the Trails Development, and that could be a good test to slow people down.
Oh, that's a good point. Yeah, I guess, just, oh, they figure they'll be done by then, October, right? So you figured that you're only gonna have just one might be a carryover, or was there more than one, you said?
Just one.
Just the one, huh? That's pretty good then. Very good.
And it's out of our control, so it's...
Yeah, I know, I know. You did an excellent job.
Any further questions regarding the capital projects?
Councilor Flyer?
Nope.
Oh, okay, nope, that's it.
Okay. With respect to snow clearing, last year, with the Public Works Manager and in collaboration with the Public Works Supervisor and Assistant Supervisor, looked at doing snow clearing with some alternative ways than previously done in the past years. What they have done here is they've approached doing the developments in that using two graders at the same time. And in doing that, there's efficiencies that were determined that this was a better way to do those existing developments out there like Riverdale, Whistler Hollow, Rivercrest, et cetera. So based on that outcome, what we're planning to do this year is do furthermore work based on that instead of using a plow truck for some of those developments. Plow truck will be used in the rural areas, but also what we did is we tried using also the grader for doing some of those rural areas, which normally we haven't done in the past. And using the grader as well, we found that there's some efficiencies as well in cleaning the snow and the hard-packed snow and ice using the grader versus a plow truck. So we intend to use that this year as well, and that provides additional efficiencies for that. We also have replaced the existing old plow sand truck, and we finally received that this year. So we will have better efficiencies doing sanding as well as doing that new plow truck in the areas that are required. We also are pending receiving the tandem dump sander, and that has a larger volume of sand on it for sanding the roads. So we anticipate having some efficiencies better than what there was in the past when we come to sanding the whole entire RM with the two sanding trucks this year. And, you know, as we go on, we'll try and improve on that and see how that works. So when we had the two small sanding trucks, we had to go, we had to go back to the source supplier. So you'd have more trips filling that up and then going out sanding. Whereas we have a larger tandem dump truck now with a larger sander, there'd be less visits going to the supplier, filling that up. So we'll be able to cover more area and be more efficient that way. So we'll monitor that and see how that goes going forward for the new winter season for 2024, 2025, and that. Yeah, Rick?
My question, does it make sense for us to get our own little bunker and get our own trailer load of sanding sand and salt delivered by a Maple Leaf like that?
I was just going to start there with that. We've discussed the availability of the sand, especially weekends, et cetera. I've also heard rumor, I don't know if it's true, that Maple Leaf is looking at moving their whole operation to Route 90, which would be a much longer drive to get the sand. So we've decided what we'll do is we'll stockpile sand. We'll make an area available in our yard, stockpile the sand, and then we can come and load it up ourselves at any time.
Okay, yeah, that's great. They are definitely moving. I know that for a fact, so. And I personally thought snow clearing was great last winter. I know, you know, some people had some issues with it, but I think you guys do a great job. What, are you guys going to try to take over any of the developments once these contracts expire?
Our tender for the snow clearing was a two-year contract, and then expires in 2025. So the contractor who was successful on the tender was S&amp;J, and they'll continue to do that contract snow clearing for this winter season. And moving forward, we're going to evaluate doing some of that development ourself on those new developments.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess, so the sand, do you have to have it covered? Like, you got salts in the sand, correct?
Yeah. We can make provision for covering it.
Oh, you can, okay.
Yeah.
And you used to just pick it up here before? Like, where did you pick it up?
In the past, we picked it up at Maple Leaf Yard on Capitolis there.
Oh, okay.
Because they would stockpile it there for themselves as well as others.
Yeah, and they would provide loading capabilities on weekends too if we required it. But that looks like that'll change.
Yeah, okay.
Is the entire operation moving?
Yes. Councilor Campbell, that's correct, they are moving entirely?
Yeah, they are for sure. They've already moved fifty percent of their equipment over to the new site.
Ready?
Anyone else have any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much for coming down, for your time, for your explanations. Much appreciated.
Oh, are we finished completely with the works?
For Public Works?
Oh, yeah, I just had a quick question. Did you guys get lots of culvert and ditching done this year?
Not yet, but we're about to start next week.
Oh, boy. Okay. I guess you're under a time crunch then a little bit.
Typically, it's done in the fall. That's typically when we do it.
Okay. Because I know we gave you guys a lot of stuff to do there.
Yeah.
As far as culverts go. And did you get, did you receive the equipment that we approved yet? When is that coming? The inland?
Oh, the tandem truck, spoke with the supplier today. The truck is in town. They're just waiting for the stainless steel box and all the equipment to be completed. He's anticipating delivery will be right around the first week of December.
Okay, so do they have to do all the attachments or whatever it is?
Yeah, the sanding unit.
The sanding unit, and the box is custom-made, so it won't rust or...
Because they told you six weeks delivery, right?
No.
Didn't they? Yeah?
No, one of the other suppliers may have.
Yeah, there was some...
This was inland, though?
Yeah.
You went with inland? We went with inland.
Correct.
And I remember on the, we were told it was a six-week delivery.
The low bidder was over a year.
Okay. Let me just check here, because I'm pretty sure they had said six weeks on delivery on that one. And that's one of the reasons why we did go with that one. So you're not getting it in six weeks.
Yeah, the tandem truck was basically in stock, but the sanding unit had to be manufactured.
Oh, okay.
To fit that unit.
Yeah. Oh, here it is, tandem axle dump truck, complete with drop-in sanding unit, and...
And the international truck that was tendered on, that was over a year delivery, and then they'd have to manufacture the sanding unit to put in there, so.
Okay, so inland said they could do it in a hundred and twenty days, which is about what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we didn't wanna wait fourteen to fifteen months for that one.
No.
Yeah, I don't want to approve something and then find out if they can provide it for us. So it's like, how are we... Do you say a hundred and twenty days? Do you pay a little bit more money for that?
Okay, so next is, we're down to four point, four point one financial statements. Right.
So I'm here to present our month-ending July 31st financial statements.
Crystal, excuse me. Could you maybe expand it a bit, make it larger? Just in the bottom corner, I see there.
Go like this, is that okay?
Yeah, that's good.
There you go.
Really good.
Okay, so the first statement is our balance sheet. As you'll see, there's slight changes from previous month in the cash on hand. It fluctuates as we receive cash in and cash goes out. No changes in the non-financial assets. Those are tangible capital assets. So those will be adjusted at year-end once all capital projects have been completed. Tax assets, those are our receivables for taxes. So currently, at the end of July, we have just over ten million outstanding to be collected. Other receivables, we have one point five million, or almost one point six. And then we have a couple other receivables. Those could be, there's a couple grants that were outstanding at the end of the year that we receive payment for in August.
Excuse me, Crystal. So you said you, tax assets, you have ten million still to collect?
Yes.
Why is that? Like, didn't...
That's what, taxes aren't due until September 27th.
Right, right, good.
So that'll go down drastically in September. We've been receiving quite a few payments over the last couple weeks. A lot more people are starting to pay online, which is nice. It gives us the time to process the payments and not be so rushed at the counter. But we still have the people that do come in, and we do like to see you, so don't be afraid to show your face.
I jumped ahead there. I forgot, I thought tax was already in, but then as soon as you started talking, I realized, wait.
Yeah, no, September 27th.
Yes.
Four thirty. Yeah, so like I said, that'll come down as the payments come through. Further down on the statements, so these are our non-financial assets. Those, like I said, will change at year-end once all the allocations are done from our operating to our PSAB adjustments. Because we run on a cash basis, we keep all payments, all assets under the cash basis. Those are expenditures that go out. And then we have to do the adjustment for the PSAB-related statements that transfer those assets into our non-financial assets here on the balance sheet.
And is the education portion on the current liabilities the tax that's due from the taxes we collect?
Yes, so that is the tax that we owe to the education departments. So Seven Oaks, the province, as well as Interlake. We have until end of January to make the payments. It's based on a percentage of collection. So come September, whatever we collect at the end of the month, we'll make a payment in October for that portion.
Okay. So it's basically ten million minus six point four? Is your receivable tax assets versus your six point four liability under education?
So then our payables, those are all the outstanding checks that we've issued over the last little while, up to obviously July 31st. So as those checks are cashed, that amount goes down. Loans and debentures, those are outstanding loans. That's our current year payables. They are due, one is due beginning of December. The other five are due at the end of December. So that'll stay on the books until December 31st statements, when those payments are made.
I noticed you quoted them 2013-19. Is that when you took it out? And that's the length of how many months you have? Or how does it, is that...
For the debentures?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the bylaw number?
Oh, that's the bylaw number, okay.
Yeah. So generally, it's twenty years from that, 2013. You have twenty years to make that.
Twenty years, okay. And our interest rate is locked in?
Yes.
And it's...
Yeah, it doesn't fluctuate. They're, they're all different. They're roughly around the three to three and a half percent mark. Further down, we have our non-current liabilities. So we have some accrued liabilities. Those are amounts that we will be expecting. So it could be, sorry, the amount, not amounts we're expecting, amounts we're expecting to pay out. So prepaid's, we accrue those. We have our due-to utility, our due-to general reserves. Transfers are made throughout as expenditures are set, or payments are made, revenues come in. Those amounts fluctuate. And then we have our deferred or unearned revenue. So this is anything that is unearned at that time. And then deposits and land sales. So deferred revenue is also developer payments. Would be any deposits that we've received for any type of planning-related items such as the, sorry, drawing a blank, the $2,000 that we require to collect from each property when they come in to take a permit for a new home. We have our long-term debentures. So these are all the long-term debentures. These are the amounts that are not 2024 payments, but is 2025 into the future. So you can see there what's currently outstanding on each of those loans. And then on the bottom, we have our surplus. So we have our surplus at the beginning of the year. This is the amount that was at the end of our 2023 financial statements. It's just transferred over. And then we have our PSAB adjustments. Like I said, those are for the assets that we have to allocate for cash basis back to PSAB. So it just sits in there. And then we have a current year surplus. So currently, we're sitting at 3.4 million in surplus. And that changes as we make payments and as we receive revenues. That amount will also link to our statement of operations, which is our next statement that we have. So a little more detail, we have our tax levies. So the top line is our tax levy, less the amounts that we have to pay to this provincial education and the two school divisions. So our total tax levy for the year was 6.1. As you'll see, the outstanding tax levy on your balance sheet is more than what your current year tax levy is. That is because not everybody pays their taxes on time. So we do have arrears, which are to be collected within two years. So we'll collect the funds within two years regardless.
Are you gonna be sending out another email blast about the taxes? Couple more?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, because I'll tell you what, it reminded me, so I was down here yesterday paying my taxes because, but I don't want to forget this.
There should be one more coming out, I believe, this week, where we were the 10th. So on the, around the 15th, we'll send one. And then the following, the week before taxes are due, and the week that taxes are due. And we'll also send a couple out through that, throughout that week. Just reminders for online payments and just the, you know, FYI, that tax is, are due on Friday, and...
Yeah, I would, I put that like bold, because people, I guarantee you, people will say, oh, I thought I had till the 30th. It's always been the 30th, and this year it's the 27th. So we should probably bold that date so they know, no, no exceptions.
It's listed on the tax bill. It is listed in our tax insert, but we include with all the tax bills. I know not a lot of people read them, because people have admitted to me they don't.
We look at the number.
But highly recommend, take a look through there. There's a lot of important information in that insert, so. But yes, we will, we highlight it on the top of our e-blasts that we send out. So carrying on, we have taxes added to rolls. So we're currently working on our supplementals. So that number will change effective September. I wanna say we're sitting at about 1,500 tax bills that we're in the process of preparing. I don't have a dollar figure just yet.
Fifteen hundred tax bills?
Fifteen hundred tax bills for supplemental taxes. So that's additional, or potentially some cancellations as well. So new homes being assessed, businesses being added on.
And the supplemental, we keep the whole thing?
Mm-hmm. Yep. And then we have our tax and redemption penalties. So that's penalties on the outstanding amounts that are not, that have not been paid and passed due. Carrying on, so we have our provincial grant in lieu. So that is the amount that we will be receiving from the province as grant in lieu. That is, instead of them paying taxes, they pay a grant. And then we have our user fees. So that is for any sales of service. That includes recreation, general government, fire department, any miscellaneous revenues that we receive within the RM.
Excuse me. So, okay, I just wanna go back to grant and lose. So instead of paying taxes, they pay a grant?
Yeah. They don't get like a normal tax bill like everybody else receives. They receive a statement stating, this is what the taxes are on that property based on your assessment. It's calculated the same way. But it's considered a grant instead of tax charge to them.
They just categorize it or...
Yeah, it's just, it's a fancy name, I...
Yeah.
So what property does the province own here in the West End Park?
They own multiple properties, actually. All your roadways.
Pardon?
Your roadways.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, and they have some also parcels that they own for drainage, those kinda, yeah.
Okay.
And then Manotuba Hydro will be known as it.
Hydro is grant in lieu.
Oh, that's, okay.
In your building, yep.
So carrying on, so then we have our provincial grants. So these are unconditional government transfers. These are items that are not expected. There are grants that we apply for throughout the year. So we can budget a small amount, but we cannot budget a hundred percent of it because we don't know what's guaranteed. Uh, so, we can budget a small amount, but we cannot budget a hundred percent of it, cause we don't know what's guaranteed and what. You know, what we, what we will receive for the year. Uh, conditional government transfers. And those are items that are, again, grants. Um, and they are transferred over with conditions applied to them.
Would that be like an LID?
Uh, no, it's generally, um. Let me just double check, I'll give you actually exactly what's in there.
What then will be like, would that be like gas tax or?
Um, so. Our unconditional is our municipal operating grant and gas tax. Municipal operating grant this year was a lot higher than what. We had budgeted for, and that is because they, with the change in government. Uh, they hadn't finalized the amounts that were being transferred, and that goes the same with. Gas tax, whi- which is now the community building fund, uh, we just received notice the other day about that one. I haven't, I'm gonna admit, have not read it yet, so I don't know what we're expecting.
Excuse me, I think Peter has, does Peter have a question? Peter Campbell?
So, I just wanna ask this question again, I asked it before, I just, it'll probably apply to lots of people. So, my property is on tips. And I got, you know, something, it's just a little bit confusing the way it says it, so I, because I'm on tips, right, you guys always take a little bit too much. But I don't owe anything, September twenty seventh, correct?
Correct, everybody who's on tips is cleared to zero. Um, the, the bills are printed in April by the province, so they're not, they're up to date as the date of printing. Uh, but we cannot issue them up to the date that we actually send them out. Uh, it takes time for the province to prepare their files and print the bills. Uh, by the time we submit, it takes them about four to six weeks before we get the bills in our hand. We would let you know if you still owed. But yeah, no, anybody on tips, we always ensure that your taxes are paid to zero, uh, by the end of September. So there's nothing that you need to do on your end. So the conditional government transfers, those would be like the handy van. So it's based on that, uh, the recycling, it's based on the recycling um, that we produce within the RM. And the reports that we submit. Um, and then there's some other grants in there, uh, that would be um. Like the sa- summer jobs, the summer students, so there's conditions applied to those grants in order for us to receive them. Uh, next, we have our fees and permits, so our licenses and permits. Licenses include business licenses, uh, it includes dog licenses. Um, and that sort of uh, items. Uh, permits would be anything that is planning related, so any of the permits that are required to be taken up. And then we have our investment income. Um, bank recs are a little behind, uh, just due to some staffing shifts within my department. Uh, we are getting to the point that we are almost finally settled. So hopefully, those will be caught up in the next uh, couple months. Uh, and then you'll see your investment income go up quite a bit. Uh, we're currently receiving between forty-five to fifty thousand per month, so just to give you an idea. Uh, and that is the amount on there, I believe is, no, it's January and February, so we're at March. Um, and the miscellaneous revenue, again, that's just miscellaneous items that come through. Uh, it could be miscellaneous grants that we've received as well. Uh, the reason it is. The seven eighty-four. Uh, we have. So we have proceeds on real estate sales, so there was a sale of land that is. Believe it was the Elm property, we received the funds this year. In January, February. Um, and we have some miscellaneous non-taxable revenues, so that would be anything that is related to. Photocopies, extra uh, recycling bins. And then we have uh. Canada Day donations. And that sort of thing, so just miss, some miscellaneous items don't, that don't kinda fit into the other categories. So you'll see on the next page, our total revenues so far for July, yeah.
If you just go back to miscellaneous revenue, we budgeted fifty-one thousand. And we got in seven hundred eighty-four thousand.
That's that six hundred thousand, it's six hundred and. What exactly is? Almost seven hundred thousand for uh, uh, real estate, so land sale.
Oh, okay, land sale, okay.
Uh, so you'll see here, our total revenues is just under nine million for ending July thirty first. And now that revenue is then offset by all our expenses, so these are lumped into basically departments, so. We have our general government legislation, these are all the council, council related expenses. Excuse me, so that includes all your payroll. Um, conferences that you attend, uh, meeting expenses. Um, and then we have administration, so we have our wages and benefits, that's for all administration within our building here. Um, professional contract services, so that includes legal. Um, our advertising, uh, any contracts that we have for equipment. So photocopyers is part of that, uh, utilities is. Sewer, water, hydro, phone, gas. Uh, maintenance and materials and supplies, that's any kind of materials that we need with, to maintain the building as well as. Um, office supplies, uh. Printing, so like the printing uh, charge that we have to pay for printing documents. Um, grants and contributions, so those are the grants and contributions that were approved by council. Uh, and then other is just a little miscellaneous, other revenues. Just to give you a little insight of what that is, uh, we have interest and penalties, so that would be interest that. We've paid on invoices that were either late or um, penalties that we paid. Again, on invoices. Um, all, as well as um, our visa cards have annual maintenance fees, so that's in there as well. Uh, following that is protective services, so this is the fire department, again, their wages and benefits, this is for all the fire department. Um, I mean, there's their professional and contract services, so this is for anything that they. Uh, have contracts for, or that work is done on behalf of them, so. Uh, it includes. Their IT services, garbage collection, uh, building alarm, insurance, animal control. That's all part of that one, utilities again, sewer, water, hydro, gas, phone. Uh, and maintenance and materials, that's any materials that they require to maintain their vehicles, their equipment, uh, the building. Um, and there's also bylaws in those as well, as well as our emergency. Our EMO coordinator charges, he's part of that. Uh, following that is transportation, so again, wages and benefits, so that includes all the public works department, not including utilities. Uh, professional contract services, again. Uh, tasks that are prepar- uh, performed by outside parties, uh, cause the RM can't do them. Or doesn't have the staff to do them, uh, utilities, sewer, gas, water. Phone, hydro, and then maintenance, materials and supplies, so that includes. Um, the road patching, uh, supplies they need, garbage bags, uh. Equipment supplies, um, wipers, tires, windshield fluid, et cetera. Following that is our environmental health services, uh, so this is our. Uh, garbage and recycling, so that's our monthly pickup, and then the bins are the materials and supplies. Public health and welfare, these are our handy van services. Uh, environmental development, this is our planning department, so this includes our two planning, uh, employees. Uh, any professional contract services, that is our, an engineer, uh, we do receive majority of that back. Through the permits that people pay. Um, for their lot grades, so that's all the co- um, charges for lot grades go into that, and then there's the revenue for it, the offset. Utilities, it's for signs, so we have a couple of signs within the RM that are um. Lit up, so there's hydro on those, and then just some general maintenance materials and supplies, so. It would be if we need to um. Pull a land title, we have the ability, we have a small account, uh, with land titles, and we just pull from there. Economic development, so in here, this is for our um. Oh, what is it called? Um. Let me just flip to that page. Sorry, conservation district, that's, it's on the tip of my tongue, so those are our fees, uh, that we pay annually for them. Uh, next page is our recreation, so wages and benefits for all recreation employees, so this includes. Our um, staff, uh, regular staff, the maintenance staff, uh, summer camp and summer maintenance staff, so they're all in there. Professional contract services, so for this is for anyone that we hire out to do our programming, so we have yoga instructors, we have. Companies that come in and supply, um, activities for the kids during summer camp. Um, et cetera, utilities, again, sewer, gas, water, phone. Uh, and materials and supplies is any materials for. Uh, socials, ma- maintenance of the building, maintenance of the fields, maintenance of the hockey rink. Um, and program supplies that are put on by our summer camp staff. Fiscal services, those are our loans, so those are, that's our current year, uh, debenture payments. And then the contribution to capital, those are major projects, so what would be in there would be anything that is linked to the new sewer LIDs. Uh, and then we have our transfers in. So these are all our capital items, transfer those funds in, you'll see a revenue that offsets these amounts as well, so it's a nil effect on. Your surplus. Uh, transfer to reserve, so this is any revenues that we've received that are transferred automatically to reserve, so it's a net effect on the surplus. So as you can see here, we have three point four million, which then also matches your balance sheet, uh, surplus, the three point four six. Any questions on those statements? No, uh, following.
Council favor, council machine, does Councilor Campbell have any? None, okay, go ahead, thank you, sorry.
So following that, we have our reserve balance sheet, so this just shows you where your reserves sitting at, what you have currently in the financial account. Uh, at the bank, um, and the due to, or due from general reserve fund, so these are due to the reserves. Uh, those, that amount will change as the capital expenditures are made. Um, as well as any um, interest that we receive on the cash account on the general side. Uh, so the bottom part is your current year surplus. These are all adjusted at the end of the year, once we do all of our allocations, to ensure that everything has been transferred in and out accordingly to. Uh, what was spent and what has been received. Following that is our River's Edge sewer operating, so there's the balance sheet, very simple, you have some accounts receivables. Uh, you have some assets, and you have due to and due from, so some of this is due from the general, and some of it is due to the utility reserve. Uh, further down, you'll see the your surplus, so again, your carryover surplus, current year surplus. Um, and the three thousand will match back to your statement of operations, which is your following statement. Uh, which is the detail of the surplus, so your revenues and your expenditures, so this is where you'll see all your utility salaries, any. Materials and supplies that is required for the utility, any repairs and maintenance that is required for the utility, this one in specific is River's Edge. Uh, we have two quarters billed, uh, the next quarter is billed September thirtieth, so that, you'll see the revenues increase at that point in time. Then you have your sewer reserve for the River's Edge, so that's what's currently sitting in the River's Edge sewer reserve. Following that is your sewer utility operating balance sheet. So again, your receivables, your due to, due froms, and your current assets for uh, the sewer. Uh, following that is your liabilities, so you have, there's a couple of liabilities on the books for that, you have some prepaid accounts as well. Uh, and then your surplus at the end, so you're sitting currently at five hundred and sixty thousand. For surplus in sewer, that will change as expenditures are made, uh, throughout the year. And the, the large ones are the city of Winnipeg expenditures that are made at the end of the year. Um, following that statement is your statement of operations, so again, your revenues, so your sewer billings, any other charges that we receive, so. Some of these will change monthly, depending on how many permits are taken out for new builds. Um, and then your expenditures will change monthly as well as. Uh, I, uh, items are purchased, salaries are spent, um. And then, following that page, on page two, you'll see the five sixty links back to your bal- balance sheet. So we're sitting at five hundred and sixty thousand as of July thirty first. Then we have our sewer reserve, that's currently what's in the sewer reserve, um, for future repairs and maintenance, as required by the PUB. Uh, water utility, same thing, receivables, assets, uh, due to, due froms, following that is your surplus. Uh, so currently, we're sitting at uh, a hundred and fourteen thousand. Which links to your statement of operations, again, your sewer, your, your water revenues. Uh, and then your expenditures below. Um, which give you your surplus of the four, one, uh, sorry, a hundred and fourteen thousand. Following that's our reserves, so this is what we currently have in the water reserve as of July thirty first. Um, this was briefly talked about earlier, this is our capital item, so it's, the expenditures are updated to July thirty first. Uh, we have taken into consideration council's request for a percent of completion, so we've included that column on the end there. Instead of stating whether it's complete or not. So this gives you a better idea of where projects are currently sitting as of July thirty first. Uh, questions, comments?
Anyone have, Councilor Campbell? Council machine? Council Campbell? Do you have any questions? So I got just two, just more or less. One of them, uh, just came to mind now, the audited financial statements for last.
Yeah, so I actually just received an email today from our auditor, um. They're requesting some information, so I'll have to look at that and get that back to them, I will follow up when I send the information to find out a. Date as to when we can expect the statements within the office.
And then, yeah, they are, they were talking about there were some changes in making sure that we had enough funds for. Uh, infrastructure to accrue a liability more, is, is that what you, have you started?
Oh, that's, that's part of like the asset management, yeah.
Is that words from? Okay, so that's not coming into. A regulation or something by the province, or, I thought they mentioned something like that the last thing they were here.
The province changed, um. So, we would have to do an audit on our existing buildings for things such as asbestos and whatnot.
Okay, right.
Um, as far as in conversations with our acting director of infrastructure and our public works manager, we don't have any. Um, the only one that they did mention would be our um, River's Ed, or sorry, River Crest uh, water plant. That's still there, so that's something like an engineer would have to give a report on. And let us know what it would cost for a decommissioning of that, so it's anything like that, um, if we were to have. Um, any locations where there's fuels, fuel or oil. Uh, um, garbage dump, those type of things, so remediation type things, they wanna, the. The province wants to ensure that you have the funds. In your revenues or surpluses to cover off those kinda type of remediation.
But they're not, I'm gonna say, uh, expecting us to do that, or all municipalities to do that now, are they? But they're not, I'm gonna say uh expecting us to do that, or all municipalities to do that now, are they, or are they?
Uh it's kinda in the works.
Or it is, or it's on the pipeline.
Yeah, yeah, so there might be, there potentially could be a comment on the audited statements stating that. You know, this is what we need to start doing and and work on that, so I am going to have the conversation with our auditor to see. What our steps are and how we can get to the point that um we're done and we've got everything in place with it. So it'll come with this audit that we're currently working on.
So you said, so talking about liabilities, when you were talking to the. Uh and the the director of infrastructure, you said there isn't any, so what was it, what's not any?
Well, any, we don't have any buildings except for, I believe, um the River Crest water plant that has asbestos. Potentially um that we are aware of.
Or, oh that, okay, that we're aware of, doesn't mean that we don't have.
Right.
Okay.
But that's just a, uh that's the little shack that's there that we're no longer using.
Uh they use it for water testing, that's that's it, it's not operational for any other purpose. Um they go there to test the water uh once a month.
This is which shack?
Uh River Crest.
Oh River, okay, River, okay.
Yeah, it's a little, a little, small little building.
Yeah, no, I I I seen a little building, that's why it's still there, okay.
Do they test it, does Cartier test it?
Uh no, we pull the test and we send it to ALS.
Okay.
Um and they run the test to see what the values are and.
With the pH balance or what?
I, yeah, pH chlorine, yeah.
Don't they have to do some other testing?
I believe through Cartier they do, like at the, at the water treatment plant, though, it's, it's a little different than what you need to do over there.
Okay.
I have a question for you. I noticed that, I mean, there's a request again for money, but we give a a grant of eight thousand dollars to COP this year. Do they give you any kind of accounting of their expenses?
I've never received anything.
Okay.
Council's more than welcome to request it. But yeah, I've never received. I've never received anything here in the office, no.
Send me an email as a liaison. Send me an email as a liaison and I'll forward it back that way.
I will send you the, uh an email because there's another request for funds and I'm. The the rationale in in February was, we'll talk about when we get there, but the rationale was. To increase it because of increased expenses, I got that. But now we're being asked to gain for money that should have been part of that eight thousand dollars. So that's why I'm a little concerned, and I was wondering if you had a financial accounting from them. Cause we're really funding them. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time. So now that takes us down to uh four point, four point two. Uh miscellaneous correspondence, I don't know if anyone's got any questions. It's it's received as information.
Yeah.
No questions?
On which one?
Uh four point four two, miscellaneous correspondence.
No, I have no questions.
None, okay, so now we go down to uh four point five point one, request for service, August first to August thirty first. Know if anyone has any questions?
Yeah, I had, I had some questions on the request for service, but I'm, mine are further down at uh four point five point two.
Okay.
When you get there.
I had one, I I don't know if you had a chance to look at it.
Yeah.
For August, I noticed that there's a big uh increase from previous months on hours time tracked and cost tracked. About three, three hundred and fifteen hours and fifteen thousand dollars, which is three times as much as the other. Previous months, so I'm just wondering if there was something.
Yeah, so so year over, or month over month, you're right, there there was a. Uh material increase of um nearly three times in terms of the total time tracked for requests to service. And the um cost track between uh from August uh over uh July. Um it's important to understand that that although the the number of, total number of requests was uh comparable. In fact, uh there was fewer requests in August. It's it's important to understand that the amount of time and the amount of material dedicated responding to an individual request. Uh can differ and can differ substantively. And can differ substantively depending on the time of year and the seasonal nature of those requests. So a a a good example is, is that in in early July, when we were still quite wet. And we were getting multiple requests and uh for service with respect to to grass cutting. And ditch clearing and and overland water and things like that. Um there really wasn't much at the time that that operations or public works was able to do, because. Things were so wet and so bogged down and 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 there was so, so we would get multiple requests. But realistically, the amount of labor and the amount of um material that was expended on those requests was relatively low. Um as we head into August, where we start doing things like um uh roadworks and and. Some landscaping and improvements, uh repairs to, sod repairs to medians and things like that. Uh there there's substantially more labor that's applied to making, to to addressing those concerns. And materials in fact that are that are used to to um to uh address those concerns as well. So on a seasonal basis, the the nature of requests will impact sort of um. How expensive it is to address them depending on the time of year. Um as well as sort of in in sort of June and and July, we were seeing um. Um a lot of requests, quite frankly, um we would get requests for service, but we weren't able to to really. Address and therefore no resources were applied.
Okay.
So hopefully that answers your question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, it does, answers it, perfect, so I guess to uh. You s- I guess maybe you might not know this, but where do you expect then September would line up, like? It it sounds like we had a backlog and now we're trying to catch up to that backlog?
Yeah.
Which is why there was a big expense in.
Yeah, probably somewhere closer to the August numbers.
Oh, they are, okay.
Probably.
Yeah, okay.
But it's early, so time will tell.
Yes, okay, thank you. Counselor Faber?
So we hired an independent company to do some bylaw enforcement for us, how's that going?
Uh so far, um there's been some um some good improvements and gains, we're uh looking at um um. Working on a a reporting system to to fully track sort of where we're at in terms of progress and and so that we can bring these reports forward. Um to council if council has interest, uh but so far uh we have seen some improvements and some gains. Uh we're still working through some of the operational processes and protocols that um as we sort of learn how each other work, but uh so far so good.
Okay, when I look under um bylaws. And your numbers are a little bit higher here um. Because, and I'll just say this because you have like a hundred and thirteen outstanding. But forty of them were parking violations. So wh- what's, how, what are we doing with parking violations, like, is somebody actually going out and giving tickets? Must be, right, or or are they being called in?
Sorry, are we on four point uh five point two?
Yeah, just on the, we should probably go back to August ones, but it's the same, it's basically the same thing, you're doing parking, right?
Uh yeah, well, there are a number of parking violations. Uh violations in terms of, a lot of them in cases are vehicles parked on the street where they're not supposed to be. Multiple vehicles on properties and things like that.
So what are we doing with those, we can enforce them under our bylaw.
Yes.
To the taxes.
Yes.
So how long do we give them before we apply it to their taxes?
Uh we, in a lot of cases, um what we'll do is we'll go and we'll pick up. A vehicle with a tow truck and they'll get charged the drop fee on the spot and then they're pretty quick to relocate their vehicle.
Okay. So we're collecting that in either way?
Um. Either that or the tow truck company is and uh and basically.
So I'm just wondering how you're opening and closing them, that's kind of, how are you opening and closing them then? Because if you're going and you're paying a drop fee, then they should be closed out, right?
Right, and and a lot of cases, I'm I'm not a hundred percent clear where you're looking at, Counselor.
Yeah, I am, I'm looking at the four point five point two, which is, which is the next sort of August first.
Bylaws, two hundred and fifty nine and then uh.
August, January.
Yeah.
Yeah, so two fifty nine is the total number between open and closed. You'll actually see, you'll actually see that there were more closed than opened in in that period from January to August.
Well, no, because you have forty opened and ten closed. And you have total of of fifty parking violations.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're on two point five.
Four point five point two. I just thought, I don't know if we've done the month to month, but on your year one you have.
Oh, okay, I see, all right.
Yeah.
Oh, and parking only, I'm sorry, I was referring to total bylaw.
Yeah.
Total bylaw, I'm on, so parking only, okay, yeah. So we've got a a total of um forty opened and ten closed. Um I I could follow up on that for you, for you, that could be. Um in some cases where we have um given warnings about um. Just wanted to look here, oh no, we've got Tom.
Semis was a big one that month.
Yeah, it was semis, um.
The reason I'm asking is because you now have your taxes due and people coming in to pay your taxes. And so anytime that a bylaw is in contravention and you can. You, we have a general bylaw enforcement that we can put it on your taxes if you don't pay up. Which is like weeds as well, noxious weeds and that kind of thing. So now would be the time to probably capture those, right, because you're putting out your tax bills, I don't know how you, how you're doing that.
So what we do for bylaw charges, anything that um the RM has put out. Uh for any kind of bylaw remediation, um we bill them. If it's not collected by the end of the year, it's added to their tax bill.
For the next year.
For the next year.
Okay.
But it's as of a current, so it'll be added as of twenty twenty four, so it'll put them in arrears. For next year and.
Okay.
So council will see that added and canceled tax by law each January, February, that month.
Yeah, I remember seeing that.
That's what those are.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I was just wondering how we're collecting those par- parking violations, because you know, we've had a number of discussions on that, and so. I was wondering, well, how are we gonna collect these? And I know um being now part of Red River Planning, we have that general enforcement bylaw where we can put it on taxes. So if if people choose not to pay a parking violation, we can still collect it. Because we have to have some kind of enforcement there.
Anything that's bylaw related, we can.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, did you kind of jump that there, Mr. Mayor?
Any other questions? So I just got one comment, as you know, I saw that. The grass cutting along the railroad track, so that's really great, I mean, I think that was wonderful what bylaw did, they. Cut it off and hope that's a year round, a year, a recurring yearly thing that we get that done, so. It was nice to see, it's nice and clean along the railroad track, no more weeds, no tall grass, so it's good. No fires, yes.
Fires from the track, from the the railway tracks.
It's always really good, so thanks uh for the staff for that, I mean, it's much appreciated.
I'll pass that along.
So any other questions on it, so now we go down to, we've got, got five point two done, what else is?
Five point one, Rockwood Propellant Plant.
Five point.
Five point one?
Oh yeah, five point one, a Rockwood Propellant Plant, thank you. Any questions on it?
Nothing's really changed, it seems.
Yeah, it's largely informational.
Yeah, they do it every year.
Yeah.
Just make sure the plume doesn't get bigger, that's kind of the thing.
We're down to five point two, West Saint Paul Citizen on Patrol Program. They're looking for uh funding approval. Any comments, questions?
Yeah, this is where my question's coming in, and I just sent, I sent a copy of the previous funding request. From um COP on February the sixth, twenty twenty four. Asked us to increase their funding from seven to eight thousand dollars. Um for for additional expenses, which we did. And now they're coming again for for this request, and I'm just kind of stumped as to why that's happening. Um so we got this year in status report and it included the um. Uh in fact, I'll read you page two, it says, we blanketed the RM on Halloween night with patrols to help ensure the safety of. Participants handing out reflective wristbands and LED flashers. My understanding is that we were gonna raise this the one time to eight thousand dollars or for this year anyways, and it was covering everything. So I'm not, I'm s- I'm sort of stumped as to why are they coming again? And um. I would like to see some kind of financial accounting from them as to what are they doing? So I I hear, you know, well, this is all wages and mileage and that kind of thing, and. If they needed, if they needed these wristbands, why weren't they included in their budget request in February? So I've requested now from Mr. Beshetti to give us some kind of accounting of this. From the COP committee, because I just wanna know, why didn't they ask us in the first place? It, my understanding, it was all part of the whole thing. Yeah.
To me, I guess they should have a a budget beginning of the year instead of coming back all the time, I mean.
Yeah.
Just make one.
One request, tell us what you want, and then give us some kind of accounting of what you spent and where you spent it. So that it all balances out, you know, if there's a little bit extra left over, you can roll it into the next year, sure, I mean. I have no opposition to that, but we really don't know what they've spent. So now they're coming for more money and I'm kind of wondering, well, why? When we already gave you an increase, so I'd just like an accounting of what's going on.
I I I suspect that they have a larger, I remember reading somewhere that they have more volunteers now, so they might be putting out more money for. Mileage, cause there's more people patrolling now, I I, that's just what I I suspect, but I'd sooner have them tell us.
Yeah, I'd sooner have them tell us too, because.
I will put a request in for an uh like a financial for the year, or up to date financials of. You know, what their balance is, where it's gone, and what their mileage is from last year to this year. Just showing what their expenses are changing.
Yeah, and if they're doing more, if they're doing more patrol, then kudos, right, I mean, we need that, right? So that would be great, but then, when you come to us for budget, make sure you got your ducks in a row. That you know how much money you want and what you want it for, and then we do the one time, this is your grant and we're done. And we don't have all these follow up requests.
We know there was a big push for recruitment um and speaking to Mr. Lashinsky. It sounds like there was a lot of new people coming in from different areas and there's been a lot of training. So I'm guessing with that comes, you know, more mileage and all that stuff, so.
We should, we should, we, yeah, we should still get some kind of.
Yeah, I agree.
Finances, so we know what they're spending the money on and and if it all works out, and I'm sure it will, then I'm okay with it.
Okay, so now we go down to uh new business, there's nothing in new business, nothing in, oh, October newsletter. Is there anything? Six point one, October newsletter.
Right, opening the the dialogue, if council has uh any ideas for the newsletter that you'd like to see, if you know of any. Uh interesting events, people, accomplishments in the community, uh put them in touch with us or let us know, and we'd love to feature them.
Did we put the park opening in the September one? The Meadowlands one, was that?
No, it was a little too close to our publication date, so the Meadowlands uh park will be in the October newsletter.
Okay, good, yeah, that was a good one.
I have a question, the newsletter comes out how often?
Every two months.
Every two months. Uh so there's that Now magazine going out too?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I noticed that this last time it came the same time as the newsletter, I'm just wondering. If we can, if it's possible to stagger it at a different month, like when Now comes out, then. Uh we uh, the the, our newsletter shouldn't come out, should come out when the Now isn't coming, going out, I guess. Cause you know, we get a Now magazine and a newsletter magazine, now you got two magazines, and chances of one of them not being read. Is more there as opposed to if only one came at a time.
Inconsistency in that now, sometimes you'll get it, sometimes it's.
The Now magazine?
Yeah, and that's now. Yeah, and that's now, now, uh, it's not just West St. Paul anymore.
No, I know, it's got Lockwood, San Andrews.
Yeah, so they've combined it all, so.
Yeah.
We don't know what their, their deadlines are or their delivery times.
I don't know either, no.
I'd like to stay consistent with ours.
It's pretty random.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we should change ours.
Well, I guess we should know, get some idea of when, when do they plan to send out theirs?
I, I don't like that, that NOW magazine, in my opinion, is.
It's wonderful, right? It's wonderful.
A much better thing, and I think our constituents will read it, believe in theirs, it's basically all writing and advertising. I think there's not, there's not a whole lot to it typically, there's one story about someone and the rest is advertising.
Yeah, I mean, our newsletter's about our community. Right, it focuses on our community. I mean, we could do something like that, feature a family, but I don't want to do that.
No, or then.
Because then it's like, well, why did that person get picked? Why didn't get picked, that kind of thing. Um, I think one of the things we could do in our newsletter is, is highlight some of our capital projects. And some of the things that we're, we're doing, especially the West Hall playground. That, you know, we, we picked this new playground, we put in the rubber matting for it. I mean, that was a big thing for us to do, right? And then just some of the capital projects that have gone on this year that we've done that are, that are really good for the community. Doing the, um, asphalt paving in Riverdale. I mean, we just approved that, so that's going to be happening on the trail. So improving the trails, so we, we're doing quite a few thing, good things for the community. And then we also did the trails around Sunova Center. So let's highlight some of those projects that we've been doing, along with the park at Meadowlands. Yeah, we can get a pat on the back once in a while.
Go ahead, Councilor Beshetti.
Sorry, it's not on six point one, but six for new business, can I just bring up that? I wanted to bring it up there, but I missed it, so.
That's right.
If we could set up something to, so that council can go over the general plan of a DA, just to go over it, I think we've talked about it before, setting up a meeting where we could see what, it was supposed to be a generic kind of a DA when it's being set with developers.
Template, you mean?
A template, and I'd like to go over that.
Review, review the standard template.
What's going on into a standard template, there might be changes that, you know, since we've, we've gotten new developments going up in West St. Paul, there might be some things we need to start adding to those consistently through them. You know, we've seen pedestrian crossing lights, we've seen that kind of stuff. I think it's just something that needs to be reviewed once in a while, and in the whole time I've sat here, I don't think I've ever gone over what that template is, so.
So maybe set up like an educational briefing on the, on the, the template standard DA sort of thing.
Yeah, because Pam always tells us there's a temple, there's a template for the, for the DA. But we don't really, we've never really seen that template, and we don't really know what's in it. The other thing is, I was going to ask you, on the capital project, just, and just to refresh my memory, we had administration office augmentation. What did we, what did we approve there, I can't remember.
What, what we had talked about is coming up with, um, uh, something to provide additional.
Space.
Space for staff, because we were short on space. And we bantered around, um, two or three different ideas. Um, everything from, uh, uh, portables to, to, um, perhaps reworking space within this building to, to other options. And where we've landed is, is we're, we're putting in some, um, some cubicles in the fire department, uh, training room, and, uh, we'll have some finance staff working out of there. So, uh, we expect to come in under budget on that, uh, substantively. But, uh, that, that money was there to provide for temporary, uh, temporary space for staff uh, until we have, um, some longer term solutions in place.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Does Peter Campbell have any other questions? Okay, so that takes us down to number seven, question period.
Sorry, say that again?
Peter, did you have any questions so far?
Uh, no, the only, the only thing I was going to say before I forget about it is Ido started their site work today on pipeline.
Oh, okay.
Just to let everybody know. From that new building?
Yep.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, biobanks.
Eleanor Link, ten forty-five Toshack Road, and my question has to do with the, um. Item. Five point one, the Rockwood Propellant Plant. I went through this, um, and I couldn't identify the numbers, uh, on the, on my screen for the wells. Okay, that's part of my problem. And it's related to, um, this map, which is near the end of the report on page three thirty-seven of three forty-three of the PDF. And I'm looking at the south part. And I see a dotted line which indicates well water may contain TC. TCE, but that area in the dotted line is not within the Rockwood, um, sensitive area. There's an area in the north that is also the same, and an area in the east that's also the same, it may contain. And I think it's because of these unknown plumes. But anyway, uh, I would like to know what number of wells identified the number of wells that are in the RM of West St. Paul that are being monitored. Like I say, it's hard because of the size to figure it out. If I could see the numbers, I would figure it out where in West St. Paul those, those, um, wells are located.
Uh, I'll just interrupt you, I know as, uh, we're councillor for number three, that there are some wells on, uh, Rushman Road that are being monitored. Uh, because they were close to the, uh, Rockwood Sensitive Area and they were contaminated during that, um, fuel spill. So there are some that are being monitored there for sure. The hotterite colonies being monitored for sure. And I don't know about private wells, but I imagine that on the Rush, the Rushman Road, because it's so close to Rockwood, those, that one has been monitored for quite some time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really concerned with these outlier areas.
So what page is that on?
Which may have contamination especially.
Uh, what page is that from?
That is from three thirty-seven of three forty-three on the PDF.
Okay.
And in the report at seven point four on page eighteen, four observation wells were sampled in twenty twenty-three within the outlier areas to the southwest and southeast. And I think you would call these probably southeast on, on this map.
Yes, you, you, so you said this, okay, where are you on page eighteen again? You, you read in, you said domestic wells, two hundred fifty-two are sourced.
Yeah, but these are not in our community.
Yes, yes, these ones are.
Well, those ones, but not the other ones that you were talking about may contain, well water may contain TCE.
Yeah, I know.
Those are not in our community.
And that's an outlier, but this one at the bottom in the southeast corner.
Yeah, yeah, I see that.
So they're referring to southeast corner.
Yeah.
Um, they aren't monitoring those regularly. It says, "Adding dedicated monitoring ports around the outlier areas as the current monitoring locations limit the ability to properly observe any changes of these plumes." Okay, so there is something going on or possibly going on in this southeast corner. Now, that southeast corner is around, it's off of Blackdale Road and it's around, um, Siler. I think it's south of Siler where the well water may contain TCA, TCE, I could be wrong. It's hard to figure out, um, um. That's why I'm interested in knowing where the wells are that are possibly containing the TCE. And I can't read those on, on the computer.
Councilor Beshetti?
So, right, right at the beginning there, I, since we're not, we, we, we're not the ones that made this report.
Right, right, I understand.
It says right on here that there's a contact info that, you're looking for specific information, I guess, that we would have the same information that you have, and it's to the distribution list, so it would be all of the West St. Paul area.
So, so you don't think.
Your bets, bets probably to call the person, probably WSP who's doing the, the monitoring and everything for detailed information that they could probably bring up a, a lot faster than I think.
You're not interested in knowing then where, uh, wells that are possibly contaminated in West St. Paul are because they're in, excuse me, I'm, I'm, I'm adding.
I was replying to you, and I think I was the one.
Uh, I'm not ready for you to reply.
Uh, I don't need, I, I really don't need to wait for you, I, I was answering.
Cut me off.
No, actually, the mayor called it out that I could ask you the question.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
I'm surprised that you wouldn't want to know also where the streets and roads, you know, are leading into it.
No, you're saying that we don't under, we do care, because when you sat on this table, we had WSP in here that did tell us where all the wells were in West St. Paul, and you asked all the que, the same questions.
Did I?
Yes, and they went through this report with us.
Ah.
But for detailed changes that would have happened, the report is as detailed to us as it is to you, so for specific details would be to contact the, the person that wrote the report.
I will do that, but I'm surprised that, um, that would not be an issue that you would be interested in, considering there are brand new developments that have been um, approved in that area, and the developers ought to know about it. And the people who are going to be purchasing homes ought to be warned as well. And I don't know if you agree about that or not. Thank you. I will make the phone call.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Jerry Valink, keep the three five four Gardner Drive. It's, it's not really a question, it's sort of a information request. And I don't know if anybody's aware of it, but, um, I work for companies that were hauling sanded, uh, salt, salted sand. And the government come in and required them to put barricades around it, and it cost them a lot of money to do this. But at the end, the company closed down that process. Now, I don't know if the process is the same, this is five, seven years ago. Rules change, but I don't think environmental rules got more lax. So I don't know if they're aware of it, because what I'd hate to see is put a stunt pile of sand in there and then somebody come in and shut you down until you put the things on, so. It's just information, and I don't know if anybody's aware of it, could have, could know all the details or whatever. But I know it, it was required at one time, so it's just.
That was for the water drain, so that it didn't leach, was it, not stuff like that?
Yeah, yeah, and this was like on Garland Road way out of, you know, in the middle of nowhere, and all of a sudden they come in and they said, no, you can't, and so, like, you know, this salted business is very competitive, so somebody might report you. So it's just a heads up, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, thanks for the comment. Any other ones?
Norma Alberg, three twelve Evelyn Avenue, just a, a quick, um, comment and question about the financial reporting for the, um, monthly, uh, councillor indemnities. That the information, I find it's really, um, it's really useful for the community and, uh, for, uh, for twenty twenty-three, that is a complete year and, uh, as an example, uh, when I looked at the, uh, mayor's ones, kudo to you, Mr. Mayor, because even with the large increase in your monthly indemnities, for all of you that was, you voted in last year, um, I think it was about a seventy percent increase, but still for the full year, if we, if we compared the indemnity to the previous, uh, council and the mayor and extrapolate to a year, Mr. Mayor, yours last year was still about only sixty-five percent of what the previous mayor had claimed. So kudos to you because I think that you're, you're really, uh, taking your job at a much broader scope and everything is falling under that indemnity, and so we're not paying and nitpicking here and there. So I was just wondering, there's nothing posted yet for any of the months in twenty twenty-four, and I was wondering when that would perhaps get started again.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So are you referring to, uh, all the indemnities for twenty twenty-four, for all the months?
Well, there's a section in the financial reporting on the website that has monthly councillor indemnity, councillor indemnity.
There's, there's nothing, there's nothing on the website?
Not for twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Yeah, all the months are there through twenty twenty-three.
Three, okay, thank you. Councilor Clavers, fine.
Okay, page nine of the Rockwood Report. During the initial investigation of the VOC impacted groundwater surrounding the Rockwood Propellant Plant, a separate plume of VOC impacted ground powder was identified to the southeast of Stony Mountain Institution. Between two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty-three, samples collected from newly installed, are, from newly installed RSA wells on Dearman Road and Corona Avenue identified a separate area of VOC impacted groundwater below the health-based guideline levels. Responsible party has not been identified for these areas, which are now referred to as the outlier areas. Magellan has agreed to collect samples from available sampling points surrounding the original orphan plume during the annual monitoring program and provide this data to MECC. The source for the new detection south of the Rockwood Plume Boundary has not been identified. The province is responsible for understanding, addressing these outlier areas, which is the province. But Magellan are prepared to provide our insight and knowledge to support the province. So we may have a problem on those streets on Dearman and Corona. But again, it's the province's responsibility, so we're probably going to have to get on the province to do testing in, on those streets then. Because if it's under the health guidelines, then is it poisoning our residents? Is it causing health problems to our residents? We should know that. And I know I'm very close to that, so it kind of makes me wonder. It says two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three. And I believe we had a rather large building go up in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen across the street with, uh, and I don't know if, if some of contamination is coming off of that, that was always a concern of washing buses, fuel, that kind of thing, was it going to get into the groundwater? So we should actually have this investigated by the province and figure out what's going on here. Because it's concerning. I mean, I filter everything in my house, and I'm sure a lot of other people filter everything in their house, but not everybody does, so maybe we should look into that. And the other thing is we have to figure out where it's coming from, the source. Is it coming from uh, the new building with, with, and I hate to say it, I'm not accusing anyone, but is it coming from a building that has a lot of buses in it and there's, you know, bus washing going on and all kinds of stuff going on there? Is it coming from there? Is it coming from Rockwood? Is it coming from that plume? But we got to determine where it's coming from and what the level is and whether or not it's healthy.
But we got to determine where it's coming from and what the level is and whether or not it's healthy. So I see our CEO taking notes, so I think that's a good thing to look at. And then on page eleven, it does talk about the newly installed wells. As part of the agreement between MECC and Magellan, newly installed wells within the R C, our requisite areas are sampled once following installation of the well, which means my well was done too. Based on information provided to WSP by Magellan and MECC, two private wells within the RSA were issued well installation permits. Five private wells, which were issued permits prior to two thousand and twenty three, but not previously sampled, were also included in the two thousand and twenty three monitoring program. So it looks like we have about seven wells there, and those, on those two streets. It shouldn't be too difficult to, to sample those and figure out what's going on. We just have to push the province on it.
Plus we have a housing development, we have potential housing development going up there too, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, we've got that housing development across from Siler there too, so there's some potential issues. Yeah, and thanks for Mrs. Link bringing that up. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Councilor, any other questions? So now that, that takes us to in camera, number eight. Yeah, okay, so now the meeting is adjourned, the committee of the whole meeting is adjourned at eight PM on Tuesday evening. Good night.
Good night.